Morning, it's nine o'clock. We will call today's Board of Commissioners meeting in order. I'll ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the public, there's a copy of the Open Meetings Act here on the north wall of legislative chambers. Also, there is an automatic defibrillator in the back of the room if anybody needs that for health reasons. Also, if you can, to please silence or turn off your cell phones. With that, we will call to order the Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Mr. Clerk.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item A is approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, August 2nd, 2019. Item B is called for a meeting and said Tuesday, April 30th, 2019 is the date for a hearing on certified assessment and corrections. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, second by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote.
Commissioner Boyle's vote will not appear, but he does vote yes, as do the rest of the Commissioners. Motion passes.
We'll go to Item C is Citizens' Comments. Let me read the proposed language from the last time we got together. I'm gonna read this one time now, so I wanted to read it repeatedly. It did not make the cut for the agenda to get put on. This was crafted by legal counsel, so I'm gonna read this, and this will be contingent for all the other public comment periods throughout the morning. Next week, it will be on the agenda under there for you to read. Citizens' comments, this is an opportunity for members of the audience to be heard at this time for a maximum of five minutes on any topic, not on the agenda as it relates to the governance of Douglas County. However, under the Open Meetings Act, agenda items should give reasonable notice of the matters to be considered by the Board so that the public will know which matters are under consideration. As a result, Commissioners will not engage in discussion, conversation, debate, or take action on any item presented during Citizens' Comments. If a citizen wishes to engage a Commissioner or the Board in a discussion, conversation, debate, or have the Board take action, that citizen should follow up with the county administrator or the county commissioner of their district and see to have that item placed on a future agenda for discussion and/or actions as appropriate. During Citizens' Comments, the Chair will have the liberty to keep order, and the citizen may be called out of order for disruptive conduct or behavior. With that, this will be applying to all the Citizens' Comments periods under the agenda. With that, we'll go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
This is a rule change, and I don't know how we can impose rule changes by fiat, but apparently that's what's underway here. It also is a return to the quenching of the First Amendment rights of citizens to come before us and engage us and speak with us and us to speak to them as their public representatives. I oppose this. It's another example of the rule of Rogers that we've been engaged in here for some time now, and this is, you know, Exhibit A of we're not gonna let you talk to us and we're not gonna talk to you. So, I oppose this. I would move that we strike this from our, if it is on the agenda, it doesn't appear to be. It was slipped in the dark of night, apparently, to allow this to occur, but this is not our rule, and I won't be governed by it.
And I'm gonna call your, I'm gonna call your action out of order because the fact is it's not a rule change. And with that, thank you for your opinion. We'll move on. Citizens' comments, this is an opportunity for anyone to comment on Board of Equalization related items that are not on the agenda. Are there any Citizens' comments? For Board of Equalization related. With that, we will go on to Resolutions. Resolutions D, E, F, G, and H are on the agenda. What's the will of the Board? There's a motion by Commissioner Kraft and second by Commissioner Duda to approve resolutions D, E, F, G, and H. And adjourned? Okay. Please vote.
Motion passes, and actually, I think maybe all Commissioners' votes are appearing this week, so I think everyone's votes are appearing on the screen this week, but I'll find out. Well, the names aren't there, but... All Commissioners voted yes.
With that...
I stay corrected.
With that, we'll call to order the Board of Corrections meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one is approval of the minutes of the Board of Corrections meeting held Tuesday, March 2nd, 2019. What's the will of the Board? There's a motion by Commissioner Kraft, second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item two, Citizens' comments, this is an opportunity for citizens to comment on Board of Corrections related matters not listed on the agenda. Are there any Citizens' comments on any Board of Corrections related matters? Seeing none, we'll go on to item three in the report of Director. Director Myers.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Myers, the, almost said Community Corrections Manager, old habits. The Director of Corrections for Douglas County. Yes, absolutely. All right, you have our report for the month of March in front of you. Enclosure number one, Administrative Services. Following our budget supplement, which was approved last month, we are under budget nine months into the fiscal year. In March, we also successfully renegotiated our contract with ICE, which resulted in a significant rate increase. In the coming weeks, we will also renegotiate our contract with the United States Marshal Service, and we hope to get a similar sized increase from the Marshal's Office as well. So these contracts will generate additional revenue for Douglas County. Enclosure number two, Community Corrections and In-House Programs. Fifteen individuals were housed at the Sanction Center for a total of 79 bed days. Eighteen individuals were housed at the Traditional Discharge Center for 86 bed days. We're starting to inch upward in those two programs, which are basically a way for us to transfer folks from the secure detention center into community corrections under some very specific circumstances in an effort to take a little bite out of our population in the jail. Last month, we had our second ever GED graduation ceremony. I did mention this at my last month's report as well. Nine of our recent graduates were present with their families and attended the ceremony. My former position, the Community Corrections Manager, has been vacant since my promotion. That position's responsibilities evolved pretty significantly over the course of time. It has been renamed, and it's now known as the Rehabilitative Services Administrator, and has oversight of a variety of programs both inside the jail and in community corrections and supervision in the community. I'll be conducting interviews next week to find my replacement for my former position. Twenty-four-seven sobriety had 47 admissions last month, a pretty strong month. Three thousand three hundred and seventy-eight breath tests were completed. Ten were positive for alcohol use. There were no no-shows. The overall testing compliance rate was ninety-nine point eight percent. Thirty-nine individuals were monitored for 948 days of SCRAM monitoring. There were zero no-shows, one tampering violation, and one alcohol violation. The total SCRAM compliance rate was also 99.8 percent. There were 334 saliva drug tests administered with 10 positive tests and 24 no-shows. Fifteen drug testing patches were submitted for testing, and three of those had violations. Work release, admitted 42 individuals in March. Corrections programs in the jail, admitted 49 individuals. Priority prosecution, 148 bed days were saved. Two hundred and eighty-three individuals were placed on pre-trial release. One thousand one hundred and forty-five individuals were monitored over the course of the month on pre-trial release with a 92 percent compliance rate. And 296 individuals visited the law library. Moving on to enclosure number three, our compliance and accreditation. Our final preparations are underway for our PREA audit. This is our second audit we've had since that law became enacted at the Department of Corrections. That audit is scheduled for the first week of May, and our final preparations for that visit are currently underway. Enclosure number four, personnel. We worked closely with civil service in March to revamp our hiring process and interviewing processes for new correctional officers. The new process will result in more prompt interviewing of applicants, which will allow us to seat academy classes with greater regularity. The Training Department at the Douglas County Department of Corrections will now have greater responsibilities over the recruitment and hiring and interviewing processes. The new officer mentoring program, I've been touting this cautiously for the past few months. We continue to have 100 percent retention for the officers who received mentors. And our overall retention rate in 2019, I'm cautiously optimistic we will track better than we did last year. So we're making a little bit of progress on our staffing. We further made improvements for the upcoming classes. We're now matching the mentors with the mentees prior to their graduation. We kind of built this on the fly the first time, and so individuals actually didn't meet their mentors till they'd actually been on the job for a couple of weeks on their own. And we're gonna increase the coordination with our field training officers to make more warm handoff from the field training officers in the Training Department to the mentoring officers who will work with these new, with the new officers for up to their first year. We also are having sergeants and lieutenants play a greater role in the kind of mentoring of new officers as well, and including getting them introduced to every lieutenant during their class, their training class time. Preparations for correctional officer appreciation week are underway. This is basically the first full week in May. I'll send a schedule out for you guys if there's anything that you have interest in being present for or participating in. One of the things that we're adding is family nights, where officers can, we'll have a couple of nights during the week where officers can bring their families, children above a particular age, in to see where they work. We have lots of people who maybe have worked for us for 10, 15, 20 years, and their family members have no idea the environment from which they work. So we're hoping that this is a morale booster and something that builds camaraderie among officers and their families. Our second graduation for training classes of 2019 consists of eight new officers, and they will graduate this Friday at the jail. We also began our first attempt at overlapping training in order to expedite our staffing goals. Sixteen officers started their training on Monday. So this is the first time, at least in most people's memories, that we've had two training classes operating at the same time, overlapping. Enclosure number five, population. We had 1,658 admissions. We had 1,634 releases. Our high count for March was 1,279, and our low count was 1,213. I'm on the front page of my, or the third page of my opening letter.
Is it numbered?
I do not see a page number on this.
What is it?
I think it's page two.
Page three of 15.
Page three.
Three of 15?
Well, you're way down too far. It's in the...
Okay, that's all right. I'll make sure that this front letter has, is numbered from here forward. Okay, all right. We did, our population had been down in March, which was, we felt fortunate, given our construction. As the weather has gotten nicer, we've seen a surge, however, and we so expect my report that I give you next month reports some significantly higher numbers, unfortunately, than what we enjoyed throughout the month of March. Our average daily population was 1,244. There were 361 custodial sanctioned bed days. The U.S. Marshal population remained stable. The ICE population decreased a little bit. The felony pre-trial population decreased. The misdemeanor, excuse me, misdemeanor pre-trial population decreased. The female population increased. And there were three to four housing, female housing units open at various times during the month. Turning to enclosure number six, medical. I am very pleased to announce that our medical contractor, WellPath, has hired a new full-time medical director. Dr. Anthony Montague has been training both at WellPath and at DCDC, as well as wrapping up some previous professional commitments. He's not on with us full-time yet. He will begin full-time on May 1st. He has a, the reason I'm really thrilled about this hire is he has a very, a background that's well-suited for our population. He's a former emergency room physician, as well as he's the former medical director of Charles Drew. That community health sort of focus is exactly what we need at Corrections. There were 1,094 intake screenings completed, and there were 393 physical and health assessments completed. Inmates were sent out, this is a new stat I'm asking them to highlight as well each month. Inmates were sent out 13 times for emergent medical care during March. Four of those cases were by 911. Two, the other nine were by custody car. Two of those resulted in hospital admission. Under the terms of the new contract with WellPath, all off-site medical care is 100 percent the responsibility of WellPath and will not come out of our budget. You may see, actually, our overall medical spending decrease as a result of that change in our, in our contract provisions. Mental health, enclosure number seven. There were 154 initial psychiatric assessments. There were 174 initial mental health assessments, 34 mental health infirmary placements. There were 11 referrals to the Board of Mental Health and one additional referral to long-term psychiatric facility or the Lincoln Regional Center. We are also making strides in providing the baseline data for the stepping up initiative. Processes have been developed to capture most of the elements needed, and we currently have a request pending with dot com to develop a report, which will enable us to gather the remaining elements that are required. Other noteworthy items. I also mentioned this in my previous report last month, but it did happen in March, so congratulations to Debbie Otwell, who was selected as the Administrative Services Manager. We placed additional emphasis this month on upholding the highest standards of professionalism and integrity. We've had all of our staff review our code of conduct policy, and are enrolling all of our staff in ethics training as well. I made the Commissioners aware of an incident that occurred about a month ago where some officers engaged in some very heroic acts to save the life of an inmate. We are going to bring those officers before you on April 30th for recognition. We were gonna do it sooner than the floods happened, and we decided there'd be a better time to do that than during that period of time. And one of them is in training today, so I was unable to bring them before you today. So we'll see you on the 30th. A third captain position is being planned as a part of the Department of Corrections reorganization and as a prelude to a formal strategic planning process that will be initiated in the second half of 2019. The intent of this change is to increase specialization in two key priority areas. Oversight of contracted medical services, and separately, staff recruitment, hiring, development, and retention. It's my expectation that if we have significant gains in these two areas, disposition, the savings resulted from those gains will more than offset the cost of this position. Finally, I want to talk to you about this report itself. In the coming months, we are going, as a department, to review the format of this report. I end up getting about 12 different peoples send me documents, you know, the week before that we assemble this. And some of those documents, because they come from different individuals, sometimes I think they're a little bit duplicative and may miss the point on some of the things that we think are important to communicate to you and to the public on a regular basis. So as part of our strategic planning process, we're gonna take a look at the format of this report as well. I'll probably be sending some mock reports to the Board, some format suggestions to see, to make sure that we are including everything that you find important and doing so in a way that is efficient and user-friendly. So we'll be making changes with the goal of having it become more action-oriented, less about just telling you numbers upon numbers and numbers every month, more about the challenges that we're facing, how, what steps we're taking to overcome them, and more about what we're doing well and how we're gonna try and expand and support those efforts. So more to come on that as we get into the second half of the year and are able to transition into that strategic planning mode. I'll take any questions.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. Is my mic on? Okay. On the 24/7 sobriety, you mentioned that there were 10, I believe, repeats, or when I say repeats, tests that showed positive. Are any of those occurring, any inmates occurring more than once on testing positive?
I can, without being able to point specifically at them, I could almost, I can surely say yes, that there are, among those 10, there's somebody who's had a previous positive test. How the drug testing is set up differently than alcohol testing is they, they have an initial sanction of five days for an illegal drug as opposed to alcohol, rather than just the 12 hours for the first alcohol use. In any subsequent test, they are, they have to stay in jail and explain themselves to the judge.
Okay. And how many, how long is the 24/7 program, how long is somebody within the program? Does that vary depending upon the judge?
Well, it varies upon a couple of things. One is just the length of time it takes for their case to progress. In almost all cases, they're put on as a condition of bond, usually within days of being booked into the jail. When they make their appearance in courtroom 50 down at the jail, the judge will release them with a condition of 24/7. Typically, we're talking about, on an average, probably the most common length of time is about six months, and that's basically tell it takes, the time it takes for their case to work its way through the system.
Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
Excuse me. Yes, I want to ask you on page three of 50, the medical care, it says that inmates were, had emergency calls 13 times, and four were 911. What I'm curious about is the, first of all, who made the decision to call 911, or who instigated the emergency process?
In most cases, our medical department, the WellPath themselves, when they respond to a call, they will indicate to the security staff present that 911 needs to be called.
Okay, good. And as far as the payment, we talked about this when the contract was awarded, I think, but is, can you explain, see if I'm wrong on this, we pay WellPath X number of dollars a month, and then when they see inmates and they decide whether or not to get medical care, if medical care is decided that yes, it should happen, then that comes out of Well, what's the name of the company?
WellPath.
WellPath's pocket?
Correct, under the terms of the new contract, yes.
Okay, well, doesn't, it seems to me that that encourages them not to get medical care because they make more money if people don't get care. Isn't that, that's difficult for me?
That would be one valid interpretation or one, or one possible consequence of that sort of an arrangement. That is also one of the reasons why I'm making the recommendations that I'm making, and actually, and Shane Strong from the County Attorney's Office, I believe, will come down when we go into executive session, he will expound upon the recommendations to add an additional person whose job is to enforce medical contract compliance. So we hope to, with our own resources, avoid the scenarios that you're talking about.
All right. I think that's something that, yeah, I was concerned about, too, the some kind of an ombudsman or some kind of an advocate for the person who comes down or is ill. I'm obviously in hearing how that goes. The next thing I want to talk about is the mental health. We have, you know, with previous discussions, we've had this pyramid of mental health with so many people suffering from some stage of mental illness, all the way from depression to schizophrenia. And big numbers, you know, I hear, you know, 50 percent of the people are suffering from, that we have in our facility, but, and despite of that, we only have 154 who got psychiatric assessments. Is that, is that because they're not, they're not going for treatment, or what's happening?
Well, those are initial psychiatric assessments. Those are just new patients only. And I'm taking a look at how we calculated our statistics. You know, there's, there was, I had some concern that we were doing, we weren't doing apples to apples. And that's also part of the revamp of the report. But there'll be more coming on that, especially as we really are refining some processes for data gathering with stepping up. And like, I'll have more for the Commissioners on that.
I'm really glad to hear that, Mike. Thank you very much.
No further questions, Mike?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there motion to adjourn? Motion by Commissioner Kraft, seconded by somebody, Commissioner Duda. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
We'll now call to order the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Kavanaugh, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Kraft, Commissioner Morgan, Mr. Chair.
Here. Item one, minutes and claims. Letter A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019. Item B, approval of claims submitted for payment and process through Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019. What's the will of the Board? Most approved by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Morgan. Please vote. We hold, we got a question. Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. In the claim section here, we have three submitted claims, 258, 371, 372, and 381 totaling $25,000 to HDR based on an invoice that they sent to Mr. Lorenz.
$25,000 to HDR based on an invoice that they sent to Mr. Lorenz. And that invoice is attached to an email that says it's for professional services that HDR rendered to this, for this enabling project related to the proposed Douglas County Justice Center, the DotCom building, 408 South 18th Street, is one of the three buildings to be demolished to make way for the proposed Douglas County Justice Center. Purpose of this particular project was to renovate a portion of Level C in the city-county building to accommodate DotCom personnel relocated from 408 South 18th Street. Additional information can be provided upon request. Let me know if you need any modification to this invoice. That's from an Associate Vice President of HDR to Mr. Lorenz. And I guess my question is, Mr. Lorenz, did we actually receive a report as a result of this $25,000 expenditure by HDR?
The bill, this was a report that Paul Coen, Paul Coen from the Building Commission worked on, and they did some work, and he said there is a report, I don't know if it's a final report yet, but there was work done on it. And this really relates to the time when we were thinking of putting the courthouse annex and the youth center on the other block before the eminent domain issue arose. And so since the 408 building would have been torn down, which is a county building where the majority of DotCom is focused, the issue came up of, well, where would DotCom go? And so this was a space planning study based on that, and it's being paid for, if you remember, about a year ago, we allocated $4 million from the inheritance tax to the capital improvement fund, and then we encumbered some of those funds. So that's being paid out of, this is really kind of an old bill that's being paid out of that $4 million. And given the developments over the past year, at this time, the 408 building, there's no plans to tear it down, so there hasn't been much emphasis on this study because it's really no longer that relevant.
Okay. I guess the short answer then is the, we are not in receipt of any report relevant?
The Building Commission has, has the material.
Okay, and I met with Mr. Coen regarding this specific thing. He indicated he did not, in fact, have a report.
Well, it might not be a final report, but he told me there is work that has been done that can be used in the future because I specifically discussed that with him.
Great. So if this is a Building Commission authorized proposal, why isn't the Building Commission paying for this report?
Well, the decision was made in working with Public Properties that because it was being caused by the potential demolition of the 408 building, which is a county building, that the county was causing the action that would result in the need for DotCom to be relocated. So because it was being driven by the county, it was viewed as related to that and would be covered by that $4 million that we allocated to that project for that block last year.
Okay, so I guess based on what you're saying, there is no report that we're in receipt of, there is no plan to relocate DotCom at this time. We certainly have not discussed it in this board and any public session.
Right, right. This was all based when the facility was going to go on that block and when that, the MUD property became available, we kind of shifted our plans. So there were some costs that were incurred at that time that really are not relevant to the current plan.
Right. Now, my understanding relative to that capital expenditure, the original $4 million, that was for what specifically?
Well, it was the two and a half, the largest component was for the purchase of the OHA building, which is about two and a half million. And then there was originally some money in there to buy the Perrin building, and there was also money for soil surveys, space analysis, and things like that. So this, this fell into that category. So I think we had potentially up to $500,000 allocated for different, smaller cost.
Okay, we never broke those out, we never passed on those, those are just subsets of this larger $4 million, is that right?
Yeah, the $4 million was approved by the county board, and then within that, we worked with Public Properties and, you know, broke out into the different cost components.
And you're recommending that we pay this?
Well, I was told the work was done, and so they invoiced us for it, and Paul has told me there is, they did do work that will be usable in the future, so that was the recommendation why it be paid, yes.
And relative to this project, this overall project, you sit on the Board of Directors of the private corporation that's overseeing the?
I do not. I'm an officer, but I do not sit on the board.
Oh, I see. What office do you?
I am treasurer.
I guess, you know, I have a little bit of concern that we're spending monies that maybe the Building Commission should be spending on projects that we haven't discussed or, but here comes Mr. Coen, so maybe you can cast some light on this for us. What a fortuitous entry, Mr. Coen.
Timing.
Your timing is impeccable.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Paul Coen, Administrator Omar Douglas Public Building Commission. When I hear my name being mentioned in vain on TV, I do kind of respond to it. This particular issue, I kind of missed the beginning, I think Mr. Lorenz has explained it perfectly. During the, during the period of time when, when it was considered to level pretty much most of the block, OHA building, 408 building, and what was the other one I forgot? And that was pretty much on a fast track. So the decision to ask HDR to figure out what are we going to do with DotCom was ours because it's part of our building. So we commissioned HDR to do, not a study, but actually do a design. And we have those, that paper, we did receive it from them, it's completed. When things changed and the MUD property became available, we stopped that project. But sometime in the future, if DotCom decides to move out of the 408 and come into this building, we'll use that plan. So we have a, we have a design, but we did not implement it beyond the design stage because the situation changed. But it was driven by the project, and we believe that expense comes back to the folks that drove it, and we're asking for that bill to be paid, that's why Joe has it.
So, and I appreciate that, thanks for coming. The idea here then is that in the initial design, or at least the design that we're talking about where it was perceived that that facility would be demolished, that this was anticipating, well, they're going to have to go someplace, and so let's look at where they're going to go, right?
That's correct.
Right. And you and I met and discussed this at some point during this, and it was indicated that, at that point anyhow, there wasn't an actual design report, whatever, that we had. But is there now a physical document that?
Several.
Reflects this expenditure?
Several. I've got staff going in the file and pulling that out now, it'll be available for you just a little bit, probably before, well, I was going to say before the meeting ends, but I'm never sure how that goes. It'll be ready before the day is over, yes.
Right, okay, that's great. And this would take DotCom from the building that they're currently in, this so-called 408 building, and place them in the sea level of this facility, is that correct?
A portion of that, Commissioner, was never anticipated that all the administrative function would go to the sea level. And that part of the conversation stopped when the project changed. So we hadn't got beyond the stage of, okay, this number of people is coming into the building, now we have to find a place for the rest. We never got beyond that stage. And we did work with Public Properties on that to figure out what the solutions were. There were a whole long list of options, all of which we have scrapped, and we'll wait until the time comes when, when the county decides what they want to do with 408.
Okay. Now, when you say you commissioned the HDR study to do this, then I guess my question is, that's fine, and I think that's appropriate, but that, is the Building Commission paying a portion of this bill, or is Douglas County paying the entire bill?
No, sir, we're asking the county to pay the entire bill.
Okay. This DotCom entity is a shared entity. We have it, but the city participates in DotCom as well, is that correct? If you don't know, that's, that's.
Yeah, the city does. The city, the city covers the rent, Joe, help me here, the city covers the rent for everything in this building.
Building, and we cover all the expenses of 408.
Right. But this operation, and I'm asking because I don't know, is or is not under the Building Commission's authority?
Operation House or?
Well, the facility at 308, is that under the Building Commission's, like this campus is under the Building Commission's authority?
No, it is not.
Public Properties.
Okay. So you were anticipating that a Public Properties, Douglas County Public Properties function would come into this facility, is that correct?
No, we anticipated that DotCom, which is a DotCom operation, would come in, would extend their presence in this, in this facility.
Uh-huh.
Public Properties manages that property at 408, but DotCom, as you know, DotCom is DotCom, and so it's a matter of just being a tenant in the facility.
Okay. Well, thank you, I appreciate that clarification, and I look forward to seeing that report. I think that, you know, it just makes sense to plan for where we're going to go when we start displacing people, and that was the basis of our conversation a couple of months ago.
Yes, sir.
And I think that that's good strategic planning, and that's, it's heads-up ball. I wasn't aware that it was all going to end up on our plate here, but I can understand the rationale that you explained, that it's DotCom in a Douglas County Public Property building that's being anticipated to move, whether or not that building's reutilized or that building's demolished, you have a plan anyhow to take a portion of that operation and put it in this facility on sea level, is that correct?
On sea level, yes, we have a design that would, that would do that.
Then the other portions of the design, would it include other moves? For instance, the Douglas County Public Defender or the county attorney moving out of this facility and opening up space here that could possibly be utilized by DotCom?
Not in, excuse me, not in that design.
Okay, is there another design study relative to that?
Well, the JCDC is working that issue, and we've been partying at the table, but that's not our party.
There's not, as far as you?
I'm not sure what you're asking me, Mr. Sir.
There apparently is a study for what we're talking about right here, a physical study that you're going to relay to us. Is there one for the anticipated move of the, of the county attorney and the public defenders, the same as there is on this? They're going to move too.
Well, I think, I think terminology is important here. You're asking me about a study. There's no study for the DotCom move, it's a design.
Right.
Which is different than a study. Is there a study for the move? There have been several. As you're well aware, the Shin Study with DLR was, was one of them. Since then, you've entertained a long list of recommendations regarding that move. The Building Commission does not have anything further than those that I've already described.
I see, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it.
Sure.
This motion second? Please vote.
Thank you, Mike.
I'm going to abstain on this. Having not seen what we're paying for, I guess I will wait to see what we're paying for. I don't like to pay for things that I haven't seen, so.
Item two is consent agenda. There's 11 items, there's 11 items on the consent agenda. What's the will of the Board? Motion by Commissioner Duda, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Commissioner Boyle. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
There's a quest to make an agenda adjustment for the FEMA presentation, so Paul, if you want to come. We're going to move to presentations, and item B, the FEMA officials who will discuss the recovery efforts after the flooding in Douglas County. Paul Johnson.
Good morning, Commissioners, Paul Johnson, Douglas County Emergency Management Agency. This is kind of a rare and unique opportunity here. As you know, we've had a record-setting event here with our recent flood, and what we have here today is part of the team, there's so many FEMA people that are, that are working this disaster, and we meet with them regularly, many times during the week. And I can see by the folks in the audience here that we've got a variety here. We've got people that have been out in the field, that have actually looked at the damage. We have people here that are knowledgeable in the public assistance arena and what the costs that process involves. We also have the people that are involved with the Small Business Administration, so we have a variety of people here that we, I think, will enjoy any questions that you might have regarding the assistance that might be forthcoming. Before I move on with the introductions here and introduce Brenda and her team, tomorrow at 1:00 is an applicant briefing at the Valley YMCA, and I want to take this opportunity to let the, the county departments and city departments and the nonprofit organizations that have had loss or experienced, you know, fiscal capital expenditures throughout this flooding event, to attend that applicant briefing. Applicant briefings have been held throughout the state, they've been in the other counties as well, so if you've attended one applicant briefing, you don't have to attend another one, but the point is, we do have one in Douglas County tomorrow, and it will be at the Valley YMCA in Valley, Nebraska at 1:00 PM. So we hope we have people there. We've sent out emails, we're trying to get the word out, but I just want to take this opportunity to, to pass that along. I would encourage you to ask questions of the team that's here, and please take advantage of this. This is a rare opportunity, it really doesn't happen very often. Brenda, if you wouldn't mind, Brenda met her on day one of this thing, out at the Douglas County Extension Office, and they were wonderful, gracious hosts out there. And Brenda came in and just, everybody started coming in on the planes, and she was one of the first ones here, and so Brenda Gustafson, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity for us to present to you an overview of this historic event.
Uh, Brenda for the record.
Brenda Gustafson, FEMA, and I'm the Intergovernmental Affairs Specialist, and hopefully you hear from me every day, at least by email. And again, thank you for this opportunity. I'm going to let, we have individual assistants, public assistants, National Flood Insurance Program, as well as the Small Business Administration to, they're going to present to you. Please feel free to ask them any question that you have, and at the end, I will wrap up and we'll make sure we've got all your questions answered, or if we can't answer them, we'll follow up and get the answer for you. So I'm going to start with individual assistants.
Hi, Reginald Burke, Individual Assistance with FEMA. Thank you for inviting us into your state to?
Can you repeat your name again, sorry, some, some didn't hear you.
All right, Reginald Burke with Individual Assistance with FEMA, and we'd like to thank you for inviting us into your state to help you out. Part of my program is just, just go ahead and, your EM, Mr. Johnson, doing some preliminary damage assessments early on. I get to tour your county, take a look at a lot of the damages that were out here, and now I've moved into what's called the Joint Field Office, and my team, very large team, will work with everyone in the state to try to help put back together as best we can whatever they might have coming to them. Not exactly sure what kind of information you're asking for on this. I know the incident period is from May night, March 9th to April 1st. You will have until May 20th to register for assistance with FEMA. There's a couple ways to do that. You can call in, that's the 1-800-621-3362. You can go online to disasterassistance.gov, or you can visit, you do have a what's called a disaster recovery center out in Valley at the VFW Hall on Front Street, and you can register in person and see actual FEMA people as well as other state agencies and federal agencies out there at the same time. For Douglas, we'll be taking? For Douglas, what we've taken so far to date, these numbers are always growing, always changing, okay? We've had nine hundred and ten registrations for Douglas County to date. And of those, we've had seven hundred and seventy-eight so far that have been referred to some form of FEMA assistances, whether that's gonna be in the housing assistance program, or the other needs assessments programs, and for rental resources, rental assistances. That's about twenty percent of so far what's registered in Nebraska, for the state of Nebraska. For the monies that's gone out, that FEMA's helped out, out of all those, for the eligible, for those who have been deemed eligible, and there's a variety of codes and reasons why you may not be deemed ineligible at this time. But so far, we've handed out $2,466,000 for your housing assistance program, which is for your home repair, home replacement, rental assistance, such like that. And we've handed out so far $388,443. That's for your other needs assistance programs. Those are things like your personal property, medical, dental, funerals, transportation, childcare, there's a variety of programs for that. Not sure what else you may want to ask at this time.
Commissioner Borx.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what date did you say they had until an individual has to register?
It's until May twentieth of 2019.
And I know there's been a lot of work to get the word out to folks. Like you say, the location at the V F W there in Valley, is that still ongoing to get the word out for, to people, or?
Yes. Yes. Within the agency, there's another group called Disaster Survivor Assistance. They are pretty much our ground troops. They also work very close with the local governments and local communities, and they try to get the street maps, and they are doing door-to-door. They're trying to meet folks in the streets, trying to meet them at libraries, trying to meet them where they can find them to get the word out about whatever, you know, kind of a need that they have and how to register. They're actually registering them in the field for them right there, too.
And this probably goes to just about everybody, but, so you mentioned that there's been $2 million-plus dollars for housing and $388-plus thousand for other. When does that money actually get to the county or get to the people, or how does that work?
I know. To the county, I'm on the individuals, so I'm working on getting money to the people. All right? County's gonna be your other agencies out here with me. Usually it comes out, it can come out pretty fast, depending on the level of damages when you first report, maybe inaccessible, and you can get some assistance right up front because you can't get home. So we wanna try to help you get someplace safe where you can live until you can get back in home. We know there was a lot of roads out, bridges out, stuff like that. So a lot of those assistances came out really fast.
So money's already been put in the hands of-
It's already been put in. We encourage folks to go ahead and sign up, you know, electronic fund transfers, because once a decision's made, it's usually in there, you know, 24, 48 hours. If you opt not to, then you wait for a check to come in the mail. We've talked to some folks that it's like because of their home situation, it's like they've worked with post offices, they're holding their checks. They're holding their mail, their correspondence, so they can get there. But we, as far as getting paid to the people, it comes out pretty fast, and we just encourage our electronic fund transfer for that.
And is there a way that, say, someone already put in for their assistance, but once they got in there, they found there was more to it than what they, can they amend their registration or application for assistance?
Yes, absolutely. So it's not a fail-safe program. There's always areas where it's like you can always see so much at a time before, and then you go ahead and you get your evaluations by either insurance, if you're gonna work with insurance, that's fine. We can't do that duplication of benefits. But then you, if you don't have those avenues available to you, encourage a contract, and they find they can assess more damages and the extent of damages, you can always appeal that process. And appeal, it's not like you go into court, but we just ask that you take a second look at your registration, and we just ask that you try to get some kind of official document to submit with it, so we can go ahead and do an evaluation, and hopefully get you another inspection out there for further review.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I wanted to ask, and I don't know if you're the right person to ask, but I've been reading and hearing about families that are, that cannot go back home because their homes have been completely destroyed, and also, I mean, in some cases, I think they're still underwater, at least I believe that's what I've seen. And I am concerned about what happens to them. I mean, are they able to, are they able or unable to rebuild in an area that maybe is a floodplain, or has flooded so many times, they're not gonna be allowed to go back? Or what's FEMA, what are they doing, what's FEMA doing with those folks?
Then I'm gonna refer you to my flood insurance people out here about that, the NFIB program.
Okay.
When it comes down to rebuilding in a flood zone, depending on what, as far as I know, without being, without stepping outside my lane, you have to go through that process. And if there's elevation requirements and stuff like that, that's another whole program for that. As far as folks who can't get home, but my part of the program does, we will give them housing assistance for that eighteen-month period until they can get back home. So that's in the form of if they find temporary housing, rental property someplace, maybe it's a hotel that they've worked out an extensive agreement with, something like that. We're gonna house them. As far as their rebuilding and going back home, that's not in my lane to discuss that. But I think we have some other folks that might be able to expand upon that for you.
Well, I'd be interested in finding that out, because that's one of the concerns that I have. Some of these folks are just, I mean, there's no amount of aid that can be given to them because they're, and maybe they don't even qualify for it because of, I don't know how you do that when your home is in an area that floods and has flooded, and what FEMA's policy is on helping after that happens the second time or whatever. I don't know. Maybe that's beyond the discussion today, but that's something that I'm concerned about.
Yep.
Thanks.
I believe that is beyond this discussion, because it's another whole program and another whole-
Okay. Thank you.
Probably another hour.
I appreciate your work. Yeah, I really appreciate the work that you've been doing.
Thank you.
I've got family up in Saunders County that was pretty well blasted out, too.
Thank you, sir. Who's next?
Thank you.
Next, we'll have public assistance.
I'm Jake Snyder with FEMA Region Seven Public Assistance. I'm serving as the Policy Advisor at the current moment.
Good morning. Brandy Halbert, out of FEMA Region Seven Public Assistance. I'm serving as the Group Supervisor for Branch One, which includes Douglas County. So, quick overview, public assistance is for public infrastructure to include some nonprofit organizations like Houses of Worship. We are currently in the process of working with the State of Nebraska and the applicant briefings. We've attended six, I believe, so far. There have been some that are virtual. We are going out, and we are requesting, for our program, we need requests for public assistance, which is called an R P A. That must be submitted through what is called Grants Portal. It is FEMA's portal to the public, to the applicant, and to the state to request public assistance. As of today's date, I double-checked, we have four applicants from Douglas County that have requested for public assistance. So based upon the declaration, was declared on March 21st, you have until April 20th to submit the R P A. However, the State of Nebraska submitted for an extension that puts it till May 20th. FEMA does our staffing based upon the number of R P As that we have in the system. So currently, we are staffing up our program, and the Governor also has a list of priority counties that he has asked us to turn on as soon as we have staff available to do so. Douglas is one of the priority counties, and as our staff comes in, we will be approving the R P As for Douglas County. And every applicant with inside Douglas County is a priority applicant.
Commissioner Borx.
Mr. Chair, so can you give us an example of the four applicants, what they were?
I can tell you specifically if you would like.
Sure.
Let's see. I have Omaha Parks and Recreation, Omaha Public Works, Metropolitan Utilities District, and Omaha Public Power District.
So this doesn't include the roads? That's a different?
That is, that would be the county.
Okay. What was the first one you said? Housing, Parks and Rec? Okay. Thanks.
I'm curious, what's your definition of infrastructure there?
Improve the public property.
Okay.
And from the date, just to give you a background, if you're gonna ask about how fast money gets on the back end of the county, once an R P A is turned on, FEMA has seven days to meet with the applicant. We're gonna call them and do what's called a exploratory call to start assessing damages. Then we meet with them. It's called a recovery scoping meeting, and that is the first statutory requirement for FEMA and the applicant to determine the amount of damage. That is the sixty-day timeframe for an applicant to provide all damage to FEMA. Then we will start logically grouping and putting projects together. I can tell you for categories A and B, which is emergency work, we do have an expedited process, which the counties and all applicants have the ability to utilize for, to getting the money back on the street faster for projects for categories A and B, which is the emergency work. Once that process starts, it can take six weeks to six months, depending on the complexity of a project, and making certain that we follow all federal laws, environmental, historic preservation, everything that we must follow that the applicant to provide us for the funds.
Okay. Thank you.
I think that's it.
Thank you.
Next?
Next, we'll have National Flood Insurance Program.
I'm John Lester. I'm with the National Flood Insurance Program. I'm a FEMA reservist, and the National Flood Insurance Program consists of three elements: flood insurance, risk mapping, and floodplain management regulations. My specialty is floodplain management regulations, and I think that was one of the items that you expressed interest in, Commissioner.
Yes.
To date, just some brief statistics, and this is for the state of Nebraska as a whole, there have been over a thousand claims, flood insurance claims processed, of which over $9.1 million has been paid to policyholders. If you have any questions on any of these items, insurance, floodplain management, I'd be happy to address those.
Commissioner Craft and Commissioner Borx.
Yes, John. Excuse me. Floodplain management, are the flood maps going to be redrawn because of this?
I don't have an answer to that question. There's usually a discussion, particularly with an event of this magnitude, regarding the need for redrawing maps. There may be some preliminary maps that are already under development even prior to this event. But I can get an answer to your question with the specific information.
Okay. And that's all right now for me.
Commissioner Borx.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So to piggyback on what Commissioner Boyle was referring to or talking about in terms of if, and I'm gonna just use the example because it's out there, is King Lake in Douglas County. It has flooded every time. There are structures that are on the floodplain, and there are structures that are in the floodway, and so the, to make things more complicated, we also have this silly law, this three-mile zoning jurisdiction that extends someone's zoning authority outside of their municipality boundaries. And so this also comes into play, which, again, I call it silly because they have to abide by rules in which they have no representation of. So anyway, but, so people like that. So here is a structure that now is deemed over fifty percent damaged, and they now are in the area in which they cannot ever rebuild. Does that, I mean, so then you're looking at not only individualized FEMA assistance, but are we also looking at the flood insurance program? If they don't have flood insurance, does your program also help these individuals? Because they're out. I mean, they're, they will be completely out of a living structure for their homes because of this.
It's my understanding, and this may relate to what you're speaking of, that the state of Nebraska has a requirement that substantially damaged structures in the regulatory floodway cannot be rebuilt. That's my understanding. Now, I don't know if these structures are in a floodway, or if there's some other guiding regulation preventing them from being rebuilt.
Both. There's floodplain and floodway.
Well, if they're in the floodplain, a substantially damaged structure in the floodplain, outside of the floodway, but in the floodplain, that structure can be permitted for rebuilding if it becomes compliant as part of the repair.
Right. So they have to build up, so elevation or whatever the-
Compliant usually, usually meaning with a residential structure-
Yeah, okay.
Would mean elevation.
Right.
Typically.
So for those who can't, then are there other programs or assistance for individuals that will actually be completely out of, you know, again, their home and not be able to rebuild? Are there dollars out there that they, that we can also, either as a county or as a municipality within those boundaries, go after for these individuals?
Now, there are, there are dollars available for hazard mitigation grants. Usually, those are not, but they can be used for specific properties.
They can be?
There can be, they can be used for specific properties, but that must be applied for.
By?
By the, by the entity-
Oh, by the-
By the governmental entity that's responsible for that area.
And then this is probably not under your responsibility at all, but would this, would you direct people then to go and try to find if there were any HUD dollars available for these individuals?
There, this, this beyond-
Okay.
What I can speak to.
Okay.
But I can't, I can't address, there have been areas that I've been familiar with, where properties had been damaged by flooding, rebuilding was problematic, the community really didn't want them rebuilt because they were a continuing hazard, vulnerable to flooding. And the community applied through the state for a hazard mitigation grant to purchase those properties. And as part of the transaction, the folks who own the properties are compensated.
Compensated, okay.
And if they were fortunate, if they were fortunate enough to have flood insurance, then they've got that, their flood insurance money also. For folks who did have flood insurance, that had the option of becoming compliant, there is a provision of flood insurance policy that relates to the increased cost of compliance that can provide up to $30,000 for elevating the structure.
Okay.
And there's also projects, hazard mitigation projects, that a community can develop to elevate, to assist property owners with elevating structures that were substantially damaged. So there are some things that can be done, but those are projects that the community would develop and submit to the state.
Okay. And then last question is, did you say something about mapping?
Yes. Risk mapping.
Risk mapping. So in some of the, as we're looking at damage that was done to roads and how the flow of the water actually occurred, it actually changed some of the flow. the water actually occurred, it actually changed some of the flow, the way it was, you know, naturally supposed to be, and then all of a sudden now because of this, you know, they're calling it a 500-year flood rather than 100-year flood. It definitely changed the direction. So that, that risk mapping then is where you would come in as FEMA and work with the folks in the county to make sure that those maps are revised, or if something has to be mitigated to change the direction back to the natural flow? Is that what that portion of it does?
First of all, let me ask you, answer the first part of your question. FEMA works with the state of Nebraska to determine if there are areas that need to be remapped, particularly when, when the effective map is no longer valid.
Okay.
Okay? Going and looking at an area where, where there was a physical change based on the flood, where the existing channel is no longer where it used to be.
Right.
They would, they would take an analysis to determine what need, what needs to be done here.
Okay.
Okay? An engineering study.
Okay.
Sometimes, depending on the nature of whatever action should be taken, that could be part of a public assistance project.
Oh, okay.
And public assistance fund, funding could be provided for that. That's, it's different than mapping, but FEMA can provide funding for, for that type of activity, construction activity.
Because out in the Valley area, I mean, that again is where we were most affected by, so you had the Union Dyke that broke, that then filled up one of the lakes, and it broke, which then changed the direction of the flow into another lake, which then flooded an area because that change flowed. Now, folks are looking at the county to, you know, put in a culvert or some new drainage, but then if we change that direction of that natural flow, then the county's liable for any future flooding that occurs. But, so we would work with FEMA and the state of Nebraska, the Corps.
Corps engineers.
Yeah.
This is a team project.
Okay, so that we could make the direction go back to its normal, or remap it to where, what it, where, how it's flowing today because of the flood?
And this is an excellent example of what I mentioned. This is, this is an area that needs to be studied to determine, okay, what, what happened here, why did it happen? What can we do so this doesn't happen again?
Right, exactly, okay, thanks, thank you.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes, I wanted to ask, and I, I always get confused about this, what's the floodway and what's the floodplain? Which is, which is worse?
Excellent question. It is a little confusing because there is no physical boundary that you can look at and see where the floodway stops.
Okay.
And the floodplain starts. Very simply, the floodway is really where, where the brunt of the water is going to flow.
Okay.
And so it's, it's that area high flow. And it's defined by kind of squeezing the floodplain.
Okay.
To the point where it rises one foot.
Okay.
And then where those boundaries are, at that point establishes the boundaries of the floodway.
Okay, so the plane comes in and that makes the floodway.
Yeah, we squeeze it, we say, okay, here's, here's where the floodway is, okay? But you can't look at it and say, oh, there's, there's a floodway boundary.
Right.
You don't see it.
Well, you know, and I, Commissioner Borges has really hit some of the things that I want to talk about, so I'm not going to be repetitive, but I'm so concerned about people because I see on the news people that are, you know, really, and mostly, I guess I saw Hamburg, Iowa was the one I was thinking about, that really is so devastated. But, you know, we're almost, you know, and the flood insurance, I mean, I, I remember representing people in real estate transactions that were inside the city that had to buy flood insurance, and I was puzzled, but are the people who lived in Kings Lake, were they eligible for flood insurance?
Everybody's eligible.
Everybody's eligible, okay?
Yes.
And in most cases, I guess, the mortgage company won't let you turn it down, so it's a good thing, but, but what about, you know, the people, are, are people really going to be made whole? I mean, are, who are they going to turn to when, you know?
I don't know if anybody's ever made whole.
Well, yeah, but close to whole, I guess. I mean, I'm thinking about people out in Kings Lake whose homes are just gone, and they're gone. So what happens to them? I mean, you know, how, if they have flood insurance, how much do they get on the dollar? I mean, and then if they want to rebuild, can they rebuild there if they build up and all the rest? I mean, who's going to, who's going to step up and finance those things? I just don't, I don't see any relief for them.
Sure.
Let me, I just want to step in because housing and all of the aspects of housing and how we're going to replace and who gets, can't go back in.
Right.
It's very complicated. There's a lot of rules, there's a lot of rules from the federal government, a lot of rules from the state, and we have to adhere to local. So what we have done is, we're really well aware of Kings Lake and Valley, the problems in Valley. We're also working with a lot of other areas where the, the houses are not habitable. And what we have done is, we don't have a lot of answers for you because it changes with every disaster, but we have brought in a group of experts. FEMA has two, I think there's 10 of them from Washington State, and we're bringing them in, a lot of experts, so that they can meet with these communities, and the state is in on that, and they're in the process of meeting with these communities to see what those options are. So we don't have anything definitive for you today. We do encourage these people to still go ahead and register and get those temporary housing monies that they can qualify for, but as far as us to say, oh, you're going to get a buyout, or we're going to make you whole, or this is how the state's going to approve this, that has, those have not been decided yet.
Hopefully that'll happen sometime.
Well, they're, they're, they consistently work, they're working on it right now, so as we get answers, we'll give you those answers out. And I know that, like I said, they have had these, this team of housing people have started meeting with the locals to try to determine what they're going to do. But at this point, we don't have answers on that, it's very complicated.
Do you, I mean, I want to get into climate change or anything, but do you think it's, well, I've heard stories, and that's what they probably are, about the, the snowmelt hasn't really started yet, and so I've heard some god-awful stories about how high the Missouri River is supposed to get, and, you know, who knows what's going to happen if that happens. Is the snowmelt, I mean, you hate to hear those rumors, and I hate to bring them up, I probably shouldn't promulgate them, but is, are we still sitting here pretty vulnerable, or do you have any clue on that? Anybody have any idea?
That would actually come from some, from our.
Claire Duda, I think, told me that.
Oh, good. We do have weather people looking at that, we don't have any of those with us today, so I couldn't give you the definitive answer on that, I've heard the same rumors.
All right.
But now Paul Johnson probably would have some information, I'll throw it back on you.
He's not volunteering to speak, so.
On that.
I guess what I'd like to say is that I, I'm very interested, even though I live downtown, I'm really interested in, you know, these folks being treated fairly and anything we can do to help you do that. I think, I think we're committed to that as well. These are, these are our neighbors, we want to help.
And that's FEMA's mission, is to help everyone in the disaster.
Thank you.
Did you have any?
Commissioner Morgan, you got two more, Commissioner Morgan?
Commissioner Boyle, when you mentioned the mortgage companies, you know, requiring the flood insurance, there's been several examples of people where the mortgage company, when they collect your escrow money. Right. Did not renew the flood insurance, and I've seen those interviews on television recently of some of the people that were surprised, they had it before and they didn't have it now in a time of need, so. I think they need a lawyer. That does happen. Need a lawyer. Are you a lawyer? I'm not soliciting.
Commissioner Duda?
Thank you. I just wanted to say the snowpack is only going to impact the Missouri, and, and the damage here, I mean, nobody's looking at the damage from, from the Missouri around here right now. All of the extensive damage was from the Elkhorn and the Platte and these ice jams and all the destruction they wreaked. We have, the river is going across our farm right now, the Missouri River, and is projected to be there for at least another month. But when you look at the Corps' projections as of last Thursday, what they were projecting for yesterday, they were off by five and a half feet. They had projected 33 and a half feet and it was only at 28 feet. I mean, they're, they, I don't know, nobody is here from the Corps. I've never figured out how you can be that far off on your projections, but, but they are. But the, the damage from the snowpack and everything is, is going to be, frankly, mostly on, on our farm. I mean, we're most of the land outside of Omaha, and, and it's just floodplain flooding. There's no buildings being damaged, anything like that, it's normal spring flooding.
Thanks, Rick. Next we'll have the Small Business Administration, Roger Bush.
Morning.
Good morning.
My name's Roger Bush, I'm with the Small Business Administration. It's a disaster loan program, low-interest rate loans, and where we really want to get out, even though it's a Small Business Administration, we make majority of our loans in a declaration like this, we work hand in hand with the FEMA Individual Assistant Program, so what we offer is low-interest rate loans to homeowners, renters, business all sizes, nonprofits, they all come in under our program, so kind of answers maybe a little longer-term recovery, that's what we're going to be here for. These loans are offered to them, it's not like they have to take them, but we're just going to encourage everybody to apply for it, get it approved, you got issues that you want to take care of first, these loans will be in place for you. But a key step with the Individual Assistant Program with SBA is we want everybody, one, to register with FEMA, majority of them may get referred over to SBA for this low-interest rate loans, and they stop the program right there. And a very important step in this program is to complete our home application, this is for homeowners and renters, that way if we do decline them, they can go back to FEMA for further assistance. They might have some unmet needs and different programs might come into play, but a key step to homeowners, renters, get that application filled out, get it back to us, if you don't want it, don't need it, it's just there, we're going to approve it for you, so. Businesses, the, all businesses will just get referred to SBA then as they register, so we encourage them, they're still eligible for their personal properties, things like that, so we just encourage everybody to register with FEMA, one, first. They get directed to us then, get that application filled out. For homeowners, they're going to be eligible for up to $200,000 for their structural damage to the home, $40,000 for personal property, that's all furniture, automobiles, and then renters as well for personal property, they're going to be eligible up to that $40,000 if they're renting that home or apartments. The, the people that own those properties will come in under our business program, I'll go through that too. These loans are written as low as 2% and can be up to 30 years for repayment, that's homeowners, renters, on that, in that program. Businesses are going to be eligible up to $2 million to recover any physical damage they had, if they own the building and the, all the equipment things inside, they're eligible for that, as well as economic injury, revenues, it's not coming into the businesses. And then even businesses that might be on the other side of town, let's say out in Valley, that's where I've been working a lot, in that area, there might be business on the other side of town that didn't get physically hit, but they're eligible for that economic injury as well. So that's up to $2 million, and they're written as low as 4%, I'm an old banker, so this is the best part about this program, 4% fixed and can have up to 30 years for repayment if they need it. And, and another good feature on all of these programs, there's no fees, no prepayment penalties, and we're not telling them to take this loan if they can get it better, we don't try to go into areas, you know, like Valley and that, to take that business away from banks, and we talk to the bankers as well, so in my capacity, I have been talking to the mayors and the bankers and Chamber of Commerce's and, but that's pretty much our program. We've got centers opened up, you know, throughout this part of the state, the one in, for this area, excuse me, is in Valley, they have FEMA reps, we just encourage everybody to go in face-to-face, talk to the FEMA reps, they're going to say, why am I going to SBA? They can go over and talk to SBA about this loan program. The media's been fantastic with getting the word out what these programs are, but our key issue is Individual Assistant Program, that's where we come into play, so we just encourage people to get that application filled out, and they can do this three different ways, best ways go to the center, face-to-face with our loan reps, they'll explain the program, we originate the loan, we verify the damage all under our program, and we fund the loan too, so we act as our own escrow company as well. So it's all funded right there, and probably the key question is, nobody's getting these loans, or they don't want the loans, but currently, I just had a, got a little update as I was listening to the other speakers, we're getting near, or 200 loans have already been approved for up to $12 million, so, so it's in the works now, majority of them are the homeowners, renters, we just encourage them, you know, take a look at our program and, and take advantage of it. Any questions?
Yes, you got two, Commissioner Boyle and Commissioner Borges.
I wanted to, I wanted to ask, I'm kind of surprised when I was reading what's your handout, the second point says that SBA offers low-interest disaster loans to businesses of all size, which I expected, most nonprofit organizations, which I guess so, but the next two, I'm surprised, homeowners and renters? I did, does the SBA gives loan, you don't have to have a business in your home to get a, get assistance?
Yes.
You do have.
Exactly, that's, I explained, and that's probably the hurdle, that's why we want to be here, that's why we're in front of radio.
Yeah.
It's, it is, it's, the name is like, the name of the bank is the Small Business Administration, or the mortgage company.
Right.
However, under this, now, we're not like the regular SBA that you know of.
Oh, I see.
You know, for the state, we, we're a disaster loan program, so we're coming in partnerships with the FEMA group to do this with your emergency management people, so we get our loan reps out there, but it is businesses, homeowners and renters, nonprofits.
And you don't have to have a business inside the home or inside your apartment if you're, well, of course, not apartment, but if you're renting a house, I suppose I go to the owner, I'm kind of confused, but I suppose, in other words, if, if you're a renter living in a home that was destroyed by the flood, you could ask the organization for compensation for the personal property inside their home.
Correct, up to, up to $40,000 for personal property to the renter, the landlord can come in and come under that $2 million.
Okay.
At 4% fixed under a business. Nonprofits, I don't think I mentioned this, nonprofits are eligible at 2.75 interest rate, up to 30 years for repayment as well. That's like churches and homeowners associations, you know, different nonprofits that come in, they're eligible for that as well.
Naturally, I have a story about the SBA. I was asked to speak to the SBA in San Diego a long time ago, and the morning I was to speak, President Reagan announced he was abolishing the SBA. So when I got up to speak, there were 400 people there, beautiful San Diego, and I said, a housekeeping note, the hotel has asked me to have the SBA people pay in cash.
I'm from San Diego, so I can appreciate that. In fact, one visitor, I went to a Chamber of Commerce meeting, gosh, I was in banking then, so that's 85 years ago. But he come in, the guest speaker, I think he was Denver or something like that, and he said, boy, the toughest job in San Diego is for the weatherman. And he said, every morning he has to wake up to see if it's going to be nice or nicer. And I thought that was, never forgot that one, but I did grow up in South Dakota, so I know what the people are going through here in South.
Now, be nice about.
But if you can help us get this word out, that's probably the key, along with our FEMA partners, it's a great program, and it will take care of some of the questions you ask, like long-term, that's what we're here for. We're, we're here as long as we're needed to, so.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Borges?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I had one, one question on the.
I'm sorry.
So, so somewhere along the line with all these meetings and discussions, there was a figure thrown out that, that an individual would be able to get up to, and I thought it was $33,000.
That is FEMA's program.
That's FEMA's.
We go in and above. Thing with ours, I always like to use this one too, not everybody has insurance, so we're here just to cover all uninsured property or any other funds they may get. we're here just to cover all uninsured property or any other funds they may get from other agencies. So I always like to say, let's say they had $200,000 worth of damage and maybe they had insurance and that gave them $150,000, maybe FEMA's nice enough for some of the improvements anyway to give them 10, where do I get that other $40,000? So that, that part will come back from.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
What FEMA's gonna offer.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good?
Yep.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up with a few things, other things that I think is interesting for you as well as your listening public. FEMA has started hiring locals, we do this in every disaster, where we hire local people, it's wonderful because they actually know the area and it gives them some employment and some exposure to FEMA itself, but they can go to USAJOBS.gov and they can create a free account and that would give them information on all the jobs that are available. The second thing I wanted to talk about was understanding your FEMA letter. Sometimes they can be very confusing when they get a letter, the first line will say you've been denied. Well, that's usually where people stop reading and then they just get upset. They need to continue reading the entire letter. Many, I've heard some statistics, 80% of them are very simple things that they can correct, a transposed number, they forgot to give us their social security number, just little things like that, and they, and they can just call and get that corrected. But they need to read that entire letter. The, also on appeals, you can appeal more than once. So if you feel that we've not given you a fair shot, then you can appeal that denial and that's where I would suggest going into the DRC as well, so that you can talk to someone exactly about what it would take to correct it. Then, um, the, there's disaster unemployment assistance, which is if you've lost wages due to the flooding event, that includes people that are self-employed. They can go to DOL.Nebaska.gov and sign up for that, again, April 26th is the deadline for that. Although tax day was yesterday, disaster does offer you a way to get federal tax relief. There are many things that you can apply to your tax, but you go to federaltaxrelief.com is, or FEMA.gov will give you some of that information. Then, we had talked about HUD assistance, I just wanted to give, if, for homeowners and low income renters, there is information at HUD.gov on what's available there. I think in the information I've provided for you, there's a lot of links that are at the end, so if you have some of that has a specific question, you may wanna refer to those links and give them that information. I'm not gonna read them all here to you today, but one of them that's not on there is our podcast, which you can get at FEMA.gov or you can download on Apple iTunes or Google Play. You just get the podcast app and you go into FEMA and there's just a great amount of information for people to understand how FEMA works, what we do. There's a, a really good podcast on Beatrice, Nebraska, and how they used hazard mitigation. And in this latest flooding event, they had minimal, I, I hate to use the word minimal because any, any type of damage is not good, but it really helped them and so I would encourage you to listen to that podcast as well. Upon that, that's the end of our presentation and we appreciate, again, the opportunity to come speak with you. As Paul said, we don't do this a lot, we're usually just out in the field trying to get things done, so we appreciate it.
You have two more questions.
Okay.
Brenda, I recall reading a while back that FEMA was going to experience some budget cut from the administration as that happened.
That, I, I couldn't speak to the actual budget cuts, I, I don't believe we have and they don't affect disaster funds.
Okay. And then, as I understand, for, for infrastructure, for counties and cities, et cetera, FEMA compensates the governmental entity up to 75% and they're expected to put in 12 and a half percent and the state is expect, expected to put in 12 and a half percent, is that correct?
That's correct.
What if you have a governmental entity that is stressed financially?
They would need to go through the county and the state and advise them and then that comes up through.
I mean, there are remedies for that, if, if a county cannot pay for it?
Um, they're saying no.
No, okay. Cause, cause I was thinking of the county, I, I'm, we're the huge gauge, yes, thank you. Right. I was thinking of some of our counties that are in severe financial distress. And then just a recommendation, perhaps the letter needs to be revised that you were talking about, to start off with, if you've been denied, there are remedies, please read the entire letter. All it is is a simple change, I don't know if you can do that, or.
Yes, we, I believe we probably have made that recommendation in the past, because we, we run into this in every disaster, but we will definitely give that recommendation again.
Tell them it came from me, then it'll happen.
That, I got it written, I'll just.
Okay.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. Ms. Gustafson.
Gustafson.
Gustafson. I just wanted to say thanks for your regular updates that we're receiving almost daily. It's really helpful and they're, they're very comprehensive and, and complete, the information you give is, is valuable. So thanks for doing that.
Good, I appreciate it.
How long have you been with FEMA?
I've only been with FEMA three years, but I've been to seven disasters, so it feels like 10.
Well, thanks for your help on this.
Sure.
Commissioner Borges.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I just wanna thank you as well, you know, we sometimes sit, um, just observing other areas that have been involved in some type of a disaster and that can be from blizzards to tornadoes to hurricanes to fires, but when it hits home, it gets real personal, like, and you know that. And I so appreciate you guys taking the time today to come out because it has, again, personally affected many of our Douglas County residents, and not that anybody else isn't less important, it's just that when it hits home, you know, you get more involved and you get more interested and you're coming here today to explain a lot of the things is very much appreciated. I can't tell you how much I appreciate that and the work that you're doing out in the field. And just never lose your compassion that you give to the people that you're serving because they're really in an emotional state at that time in their lives and we thank you for what you're doing for them, so, thank you.
Thank you. And can I just tell you that, and I'm sure my colleagues would agree, we have found the state of Nebraska, the cities, the counties and the people in Nebraska to be amazing.
Very resilient.
And a lot of strength.
Yep.
And, you know, at, at some point, we're just gonna be working on long-term recovery and that is long-term. And I think it's hard for some people to understand the amount of time it takes to get to what people call being whole, but we have at FEMA approach of whole community, but we, and we've just been amazed at the strength of the people in Nebraska.
Well, that's where you get Nebraska strong.
That's right.
But it is interesting because, you know, when you, when roads are out or closed, you hear that they're out and closed, but my husband and I actually went and toured those that were closed and, I mean, you're talking major, major roads with, I mean, it literally, they looked like a torpedo came and just shot out.
Mm-hmm.
You know, portions of it. And when you're up there looking at this massive amount of concrete that's strung all over, missing completely, you know, your perspective changes a little bit, so, but you are right, that the folks of Nebraska were resilient and we are strong and they are rebuilding and coming back, so, but thank you for your help.
Been very open to having us here in your community.
Yes, 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 thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. With that, we'll go back up to item three, which is recognition and proclamations. Letter A is a recognition of Police Week and the National Peace Office Memorial Day. Is Sergeant Owen here by chance? Saying not, is there motion to approve? Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan.
Just can I?
Yes. Motion by Commissioner Boyle, second by Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Borges.
Well, go ahead, we can vote and then I'd ask for a point of privilege real quick.
Um, please vote. Well, she passes, Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent, all the commissioners voting yes. Commissioner Borges.
Can I have a point of privilege?
Sure.
So as we're doing these recognitions, I was neglectful in getting a resolution put together in a timely manner for the National Public Telecommunications Public Safety, our 911. I know, it's 911 dispatcher week and it's horrible that we didn't, I didn't, get this on in a timely manner, but I did want to just take a moment to thank them. Sometimes during disasters, sometimes during a horrific event, we give a lot of attention to our first responders, which is rightfully so, but we seem to miss recognizing our 911 folks. They truly are the first responders and I can tell you, I heard story after story after story after story, how well they performed during this flooding event. And so I am going to ask, even though it will be delayed, I am going to ask that a resolution be established for this board to take and approve because I think they need to know how much we appreciate them and appreciate the good work and their calmness and their dedication and the, and the work that they do to keep our community safe. So I looked up and I see David sitting in the audience, David Slieder from our 911 department, and I hope that you please take this message back from the board that we do wish them well this week and always, but thank them for the work that they do, especially during this recognition week. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to item four, which is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to comment on board of commissioners items not listed on the agenda. Are there any citizens' comments at this time?
While she's, if we may, you'll, you'll get a chance, but this is a woman who's been traveling around the state, I had the pleasure to meet her before the meeting, she's been to 91 county seats in Nebraska now.
Correct.
So anyhow, Barbado, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. My name's Barbado, I live in Holt County, two miles from where the Spencer Dam blew, actually. Three and a half years ago, I accepted a challenge from a lady in California. She was looking for a volunteer in each state to help with this campaign. Now, I said, okay, and the, the goal is to place our national motto, "In God We Trust", somewhere on our courthouse walls. Currently, there's 35 states that are involved in this campaign. It's been 68 years since Congress passed the National Motto Act and President Eisenhower signed it into law. Since then, there have been three affirmation resolutions in the House and Senate to remind us of its importance. And I had one hilarious commissioner said, well, if we just stick a $1 bill on the wall, are we good to go? And I said, that's fine with me, it's there. I have a map that I've dragged around with me and it's just about to fall apart. When it's all said and done, I'm gonna frame it and put it next to my car, which is ready to fall apart as well. But it's been fun, I, I've had, I've met so many hundreds now of county commissioners and supervisors and 91 county attorneys, I guess you'd say. I did leave a letter from the Pacific Justice Law Firm stating that they would defend a challenge pro bono if there were, if would, would occur. I have had all those other county attorneys validate that and I realize you have your own county attorneys who would defend you if need be, but it's just kinda nice to have these guys in the background and I call them periodically, there have been no serious challenges and they just said, just keep on going. So I am, I also made up a sample resolution, if you're interested, there, again, I know you can write strong resolutions. You can't see this picture very well, but this was Holt County and Grandma got up on the ladder and we put three of those up in Holt County. And I have several other counties that have put three signs up, as well as sheriffs who have, out of their own pocket, put the little signs on the back of their patrol cars and have told me when they're getting gas, they'll have people say to them, I like your sign. So I'm, I'm kinda proud of that. I, I don't recommend maybe that county dollars are spent, they have, the money for the signs has come from churches and private citizens and out of the coffee kitty or wherever money comes from, but that's just my sort of little thought on that. I've been asked who pays me, I pay all my own expenses. I've been asked to address American Indian Sovereign Ground slogans, the First Amendment, the Establishment Clause, and offending certain religions. "In God We Trust" has been on our currencies since 1863, was enacted at the beginning of the Civil War and finally amended two years later. As you know, most government meetings begin with the pledge of allegiance and the phrase "One nation under God." I've been to counties that say a prayer before their meetings. It's not uncommon to take an oath with your hand on the Bible and add the word, "So help me, God." But my job is just to give you food for thought or debate, I just ask you to remember when our founders wrote the Declaration, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, they referred numerous times to the hand of God, providence and divine intervention. Seen a lot of changes in my 70 years and they haven't all been good, political correctness has exploded in the last few years. Kinda get on my soapbox here, but when you're this old, you get to do that. We've seen the Ten Commandments removed from courthouses, no praying in school, taking down historical monuments and ball players disrespect, disrespecting the flag and anthem. I come from a military family and my whole family finds that offensive. But on a different note, Florida, Tennessee and Wyoming passed legislation last year to prominently display "In God We Trust" in all their public schools. Minnesota has a similar bill and Senator Erdman has introduced this legislation in Nebraska Unicameral in January. So maybe the tide is turning. Being a representative government, you officials represent the fine folks of Douglas County and I take your time, take time to poll your constituents and see what they think. Occasionally, this, there will be a little article in the newspaper and that's been an interesting concept because when the commissioners have told me, they don't get calls in not liking the idea, they get a call saying, we'll pay for the sign. And so it's been a very positive campaign, I, I think it's been extremely successful. I don't call you back and bug you and see, did you get that sign up? I just wanna give you the idea. Of the 90 counties, I don't know about this one, that I've been to, the sign hasn't been anywhere. And now I know it has and so I can take that to the grave with me, I, I tried. Still have Sarpy County left and I, I chose to leave Lancaster, our state capital, for the last county, and I hope to get this done in about the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. So with this, with this, we are in citizens' comments, I'm, and there's a commissioner's asked to make a point, Commissioner Boyle, I'm asked to make a point and I'm not gonna do the dialogue. Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I, I wish you were pushing Judeo-Christian values, how we treat immigrants and people. I think we're in a terrible mess in our nation after the last president was elected. I think he held, it's not funny, he holds people in contempt like Muslims.
Yeah.
And that's not our country.
No.
So I don't support what you're doing, it divides people.
Well.
Well, ma'am, ma'am, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep you there.
We're not allowed to come back.
What my deal is, thank you, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, citizens' comments, this is.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Luis Jimenez, 518 North 40th Street. I'm here as the Secretary of Parker Action Alliance, fairly new neighborhood associate, association of North 24th Street. Previously, I've, I went, this month I went to OPPD meeting and they were also talking about the flooding and how their operations were affected and they gave the unions accolades. So I was paying attention on the, on the FEMA. What I wanna comment, it probably is better for the Health Department, but Commissioner Rogers, you're the chair, so that maybe this is kinda practice to that, tomorrow is the packages to helping people impacted, so perhaps the city, I mean, the county could organize that information, because when there's a flooding, you're not reinventing rescue efforts and assistance. So, I'm, I'm just kinda throwing it out there. Have a hub where, an information hub on all these packages. Yesterday, the legis, Nebraska Legislature passed a, advanced a hemp, the Hemp Act, so that's gonna impact farmers. They may use it to revalidate, revalidate, to assist the soil that they're working with. I don't know how the flooding and the farmers, you know, growing hemp is going to affect the food chain, but I think there is going to be an impact, especially with the flooding washing away the topsoil. So, what our organization is concerned with is the methods of food access that we're looking at. The Health Department does provide assistance to, businesses to provide vegetables and things of that nature. So, with all of these, with these events, the, the farmers being able to grow hemp, the flooding, living in the urban core, the neighborhoods that I'm with, over on, with Parker Action Alliance are in the middle of a food desert. So, I'm exploring ways to help food access in, in the area. There's a lot of individuals and a lot of experts and professionals that can assist with food access, especially in, in the urban core. So, I anticipate to get information from the Health Department for, for a project like that. Summer's coming. So, if you guys have any ideas, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I decided to submit a letter today. I'm gonna read most of it, just in case it doesn't get put in the testimony or I get cut off. Cover my base two ways there. This letter is addressed to both bodies, city and county, since we seem to work together quite a bit on things and are a joint planning commission and a private corporation. I won't read everything that applies to only just the city council. But since you do many things jointly as a private corporation, I offer this letter for inclusion in these hearings, my testimony, speeches, whatever you wanna call them, to sum up citizen and taxpayer comments, or whatever you classify their mouths and point out that your lack of conversation on topics, on or not on the agendas, are not really constitutional in federal and state constitutions, nor in the intent of the Open Meetings Act, right over there. But that doesn't have everything in it. If you go to the state website and read the outline, it tells you what the intent of these meetings is. And the intent is to give the citizens a chance to address their elected officials. We don't have to do that in the public square anymore. One thing that does apply to both bodies also is I'd like the city inspectors, with the assistance of OTAC and the various other armies of inspectors, to walk around and look at this building. I'm not smoking or getting air. I've noticed some code violations. There's loose tiles down there. People can stub their toe and trip, fall, get hurt. I've been shot going up the elevator to this room. I see water stains on some of the windows out there in the hallway. I see some loose tiles here. I see some water stains in the ceiling over on the west, northwest corner, which implies that there's probably some code violations. And any citizen can make a complaint. Whether they get actions, another matter. The other thing is sometimes the treatment that citizens that do want to come and comment, again, under the federal, under the rules, the Constitution, et cetera, some of the treatments that they get, specifically the treatment that young man that just left, got last week at the city council, are not what we expect of our elected officials. Some of those types of things are done here also. Douglas County Board won't let us comment on anything listed on the agenda. City Council does. Your rules are much more clearer and easier to follow than are theirs. However, not being able to comment on what's on the agenda is, is really, is kinda confusing. And unless I'm a presenter, I cannot have any dialogue. However, occasionally you do have that. So, it appears that both the chairman and the council president can make their own rules occasionally as we go along. Shouldn't be. For example, how can one body do one thing and the other body not, such as say, "Let me stop you, no, we can't go back to that one, that hearing is already closed, or that topic is already closed, we can't go back." It's not now on this agenda, even though it's today. Sometimes we can't hear the comments from you people when you're addressing presenters. Yeah, their, their agenda is, is much more clear.
Thank you, Larry.
And quite.
Yep, thank you. There's a point of, a point to be made. Commissioner Morgan, then we'll move on.
I just wanted to clarify to all those listening that if there's an item on the agenda and someone wants to speak to that agenda item, they are more than welcome and we can respond to that item on the agenda, totally. So, I don't want some misinformation to go out. If I stand to be corrected by any commissioner, please do it, but that's the policy and totally the policy.
Thank you. Any more citizen comment? Any more citizens' comments? We'll move on to presentations and item A, the State of Domestic Violence in Douglas County. Commissioner Borges.
Yes, thank you. Today with us is Krista, Krista McTaggart and Tiffany Yocel, who are from the Women's Fund, who are here to give a presentation, again, on the state of domestic violence in Douglas County and then we have time for any questions or comments after your presentation. So, thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And thank you commissioners for the opportunity to allow us to spend some time talking about this research report, which we recently finished. If you're not familiar, the Women's Fund's a local nonprofit that really focuses on how to improve the lives of women and girls and in the community. We do that through research, through systems advocacy, and through funding primarily, and as well as public policy solutions. And so, this report in particular was a collaboration with our Douglas County Domestic Violence Response Team, which is a team made up of about 30 agencies. So, all of our criminal justice agencies are part of that team, our three major medical systems, our service providers, in addition to a number of other agencies. So, they provided the data for this. We had data scientists that we, the Women's Fund contracts with that analyzed it, they ensured the integrity of the data, worked closely with DOT COM and some of our other agencies on it, and helped put us all together. So, I'm just gonna try to hit some of the high points for you, some things that we didn't know or were surprised by or that I think are kind of some key takeaways. And then I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have as well. The report obviously is larger than what I'll touch on, but feel free to ask questions about anything that's in the report. So, I think one of the significant pieces that we saw over the three-year report period, which is 2015 to 2017, is that we had a 49% increase in domestic violence-related arrests. Now, we believe that that's primarily due to our response team really focusing on increased training with our law enforcement agencies. So, we trained about 1,000 police officers in second and third quarters of 2016 and then have continued to follow that up with trainings for new officers, recruits, supervisors, and investigators that are really in line with best practices and what it looks like to be trauma-informed. So, that is, was a pretty significant increase and we see that for both on-scene arrests as well as warrant arrests. So, that increase really kind of covers the gamut. The purple is the Douglas County Sheriff's Office and then the blue is the Police Department. The other agencies, because they have such small numbers of cases, are combined into the yellow, because they just have a, a much lower volume. And then, of course, when you have an increase in arrests, you also have an increase in cases that are coming into the county attorney's office. So, we actually saw a 51% increase there, because there was a little bit of carryover from previous years. And in addition to that, about 80% of those cases had, by 2017, had at least one felony charge, which was a significant increase from, from previous years. So, I think anecdotally, what we're seeing is, is better investigations, which allows for, for enhanced prosecutions. I would also note about those numbers, and this is in the report, I just don't have a slide on it, that 911 calls have stayed relatively the same. We haven't seen a significant increase in those, including the percentage of 911 calls that are domestic violence. That has also stayed relatively the same. So, it's not new cases coming in, it's just, we believe, enhanced investigations based on the, a similar amount of cases that are coming into the system. So, you can see the increase here in the numbers in the Douglas County Attorney's Office over that three-year period as far as the number of cases that have come in and that were charged. I, we also say that I feel like one of the biggest things that we learned from this is kind of that age-old question when people ask why victims don't just leave the relationship. What we can see pretty clearly from this is that in many situations, when victims are able to leave, they are leaving, but just because the relationship ends does not mean the violence ends. Our former relationships that are in the criminal justice system are increasing. So, these are situations where the victim has left the relationship, the relationship is for all intents and purposes, there's been an attempt for it to be over, but just because the relationship is over doesn't mean that the violence is. And so, those cases are continuing to, to increase. Specifically, under the former spouse and former dating, we've watched those continue to sort of trend up. And I think that we've seen that also impact the number of repeat offenders in the system and the number of repeat victims. This is one slide that just shows offenders that were arrested that have been previously charged. There's some additional information in the report about offenders that were previously convicted and also victims who, who were also previously in the system as victims as well. So, I would note about this slide that even though with the increase in cases or the sheer influx of cases in the system, the percentage is actually gone down a little bit because of that increase, but the numbers are continuing to rise. So, with regards to the services that were, are provided for victims, we, a lot of the reports focused on our criminal justice data and what we can see from that, and really overlapping our law enforcement with our prosecution data and following some of those cases through the system. And then the other piece of this report is really about what our service providers are seeing and what's happening when victims of domestic violence are attempting to access services. And so, one of the takeaways for this has been around protection orders, in that there's about a quarter of protection orders that are denied outright, which means that they're not heard by a judge, the court, the court reviews them and declines to set them for a show cause hearing or to, to grant them ex parte. And so, we've had a couple of high-profile cases recently in Douglas County that were domestic violence in nature, where the victims reached out for assistance through a protection order and were not granted a hearing, and those cases ended really badly. So, we know this is, this is one of the things that, that we're looking at. We actually, prior to this report even coming out, had identified the need to streamline the process around protection orders a little bit, and so, LB 532 is one of the bills that the Women's Fund has prioritized this year and has helped with, to really look at how do we streamline the three different types of protection orders and make them as accessible as possible for the people that need them. I think this number is staggering. I would also say, just as a side note, when we talk about the state of domestic violence in Douglas County, as it relates to victim services, we have to look at programs that are within the metro area, not necessarily only located in Douglas County, because people access services where they're able and for different reasons. So, many people may live in Council Bluffs, they may live in Sarpy County, but they work or go to school in Douglas County. So, there's a footprint here. And so, just because someone doesn't live here does not necessarily mean they're not accessing, accessing services. So, for those purposes, most of the programs that we gathered information from are physically located in this county, but there's one program in Council Bluffs and one in Sarpy, because again, they're, they're serving victims that have a footprint here. And we see that in particular with shelter, because domestic violence shelters specifically is hard to access. There are, our shelters are typically at capacity. We have three main domestic violence shelters in the area and they're, they're really hard to get into. And so, we can see that one of the shelters in the area was actually closed for renovations for three months, three, three to four months of 2017, and so, that number would typically be higher. But the, the hotel motel shelter stay, you can see increased in all likelihood because of decreased number of shelter beds in the area. And then, I would say, this takeaway really goes back to, again, what we have seen in, in the criminal justice part of the system, which is that it's not necessarily that victims aren't leaving when they're able to, it's that the violence doesn't end just because the relationship does. And so, legal services provided, those are typically civil services. So, it's divorce, custody, protection orders, applications, sometimes it is UNT visas, which are specific visa allowances for trafficking and domestic violence victims, but those are all services that typically occur when someone is attempting to leave the relationship. And that increase was 128% over the three-year period. So, again, that, that's very brief. It's really just our, kind of the high points and I would say that we, as a community response team, have taken this in, have digested it, have had some conversations with our data scientists that analyzed this and are prioritizing some areas for us in the upcoming years, specifically around our repeat offenders. Is there a way to look at a system response that's a difference based on risk and based on the number of times that someone has been in the system for domestic violence? We don't necessarily know the answers to those questions yet. We don't necessarily know the answers to those questions yet. I would just say that there are definitely some areas of priority that have come out for us to look at and sort of dig into. But I, again, the report is bigger than sort of our key takeaways. I'd be happy and would love to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. When I owned a business, I had employees that were, it was obvious, they were suffering physical abuse or domestic abuse. And of course, they were in denial. They didn't understand what abuse meant, apparently. And I didn't know how to handle that as an employer. We had one young lady, probably twenty-four, twenty-five years old, who thought it was normal for her father to pull down her pants and have sexual relationships with her. She thought it was normal that he beat her. She was still living at home at twenty-five, because she was, that was her sanctuary, so to speak. If we could not convince her to get help, we sent her to the, at that time, it was YMCA. We tried to get a counselor and to talk to her in the store. As I said, she thought it was normal and deserved. Now, how should I have tried to handle that? This goes back maybe twenty, twenty-five years, but it still bothers me, it haunts me. Plus, the physical abuse I saw of children and others in my store where I threw somebody out, and yet, one time I was threatened with a shotgun, the guy went and got it out of his car. Little intimidating. But, you know, how should I have handled that employee? What could I have done, do you know?
That's a really difficult situation. It sounds like you did a number of things right, though. I mean, you, I think, always letting individuals know, "I'm sorry, this is happening to you, I'm concerned for your safety, what do you need, how can I help?", and then ensuring that they have access to an advocate, which was, is the WCA now, but which you mentioned was the YWCA at the time. I think those are all great things to do. I think it's hard, because we want, we want individuals to respond a certain way, and unfortunately, we don't know what it's like for them. We don't know what threats have been made, we don't know what their fears are, we don't go home with them at night. And so it's within the limited scope of kind of what we see and what we know, and we always hope for a certain response. But the reality is, is for some victims, it may be safe for them to access services and help, and for others, it may not. But I think the important piece is that we plant those seeds, we let them know there are people that are accessible, there are people that can help, "I am concerned for your safety, I feel like I can, I feel like there are services that will help you", and then when they're ready, or when they're able, then they know that those are options.
Okay. And then you've mentioned the hotel motel shelters. Do they, do you negotiate a special rate with them?
So that's done by our direct service provider, so we, our agency doesn't do that directly. And I do believe that the domestic violence agencies that are providing hotel motel stays do have specific ones that they work through and that they have negotiated some specific costs around that, but I couldn't give you the details.
Okay. I have no other questions at the moment.
Commissioner Borges, in here, Commissioner Boyle.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So for, thank you for doing this. We haven't had an update for a while on this topic, and I think it's important to bring it back around and keep it in our bases, and also in our communities' bases, so that everybody is kind of in the know. But on the protection orders, so you're right, there were a couple that were denied and horrible things happened. If someone is denied, is there a timeframe which they have to wait before they can loop back around to request another? Is there an appeal process, I guess? Or is it just kind of your one and done? How does that work?
What we've been told by attorneys that assist with protection orders is that if the order is denied outright without a hearing, there is no option for appealing it. So that, so the petitioner or the victim can start the process over again, so they can fill out the affidavit again and submit it to the court again and start the process over. It typically goes back in front of the same judge, so usually waiting a period of time before doing that. If they don't have any new instances or any new violence to put on the affidavit, the likelihood of it getting granted, you know, may not be great. We don't necessarily know that piece of the system. But the protection order process was really set up for people to engage in it pro se, and so I think that's a great process, because it means people can access it, they can access it for free, but I think then the other side of that is, is that it's difficult, and they often do it on their own without an advocate or an attorney that can help them, and they may not fill out the right type of protection order, or they may not include all of the information in the affidavit that a judge feels like, or the court feels like they need to grant the order. And I, and that is not a, that is systemic. I think that's, we see that across the state, we see that, you know, not just with, in pockets. We, that's kind of a universal issue that we're seeing.
So didn't, was it the YMCA or YWCA that had an advocate located in our clerk of the district court at one time to help individuals with protection orders? And we don't have that anymore, right?
Right. They've done that different ways over the years. So the WCA did, used to have an advocate that was located in the protection order office, and I think at times confidentiality was an issue, and there wasn't really a lot of privacy, and then sometimes they might sit there for a long time. But what we, so what's now happening is the Douglas County Victim Assistance Unit, that's part of the county attorney's office, their advocates are really well-versed in assisting people with orders, so if someone comes into the protection order office, they call them, and they'll send someone over to assist.
Oh, okay, good. And then there's programs within our correctional facility on this subject that's taking place. But sometimes I wonder if even like a lunch-and-learn program for our employees, or sponsored by commissioners in the community, would be beneficial for folks, and so just kind of give that some thought. And then the other, years ago, and I, we never did complete it, but I think it's worth bringing back to the table, is we put forth a pretty robust Cadillac version of a HR policy on domestic violence back in the day, and it didn't go anywhere. We adopted kind of that zero tolerance, or zero violence policy, but I think it would be worth, especially now that the human trafficking issue is involved and caregiving issues is involved, kind of wrapped around, that we should be revisiting that through our HR committee. And so if you have an updated, kind of state-of-the-art, if you will, policy that you can send me that we can revisit, I would appreciate that.
Okay. I actually love that you brought that up. One of the reports that the Women's Fund did earlier this year was both an employee guide and an HR guide on domestic violence in the workplace. It also includes sexual assault and trafficking and sexual harassment in the workplace, and so there's some model language and some model policies as part of both of those, and I'm happy to get that to you.
And then lastly, since you're here, I keep forgetting to email you and ask you for, do you have the updated tear-off posters? Do we have those anymore?
So the WCA actually has printed off tear-off posters to sort of supplement the ones that when, before the Domestic Violence Council merged into the Women's Fund in 2016, the DVC actually did those, and the WC has kind of stepped up and has those tear-off cards now for you.
Okay. All contact, yeah, okay. All right. Because I'm looking at my boards every time I go down and up on the elevators, and it's like, those are so old, I need to get those replaced.
Yeah, we can help facilitate getting those replaced.
Okay, I think, they're just twelve. The building commission puts them on each bulletin board on each level within the building, and they've been there, you know, since the coordinating council actually created them. And we did revise them once, but they obviously need to get revised again, so, okay, thanks.
Commissioner Boyle.
Yes. Thank you very much for coming today, and I do want to mention that in a few minutes we'll be considering LB 532, the protection orders that you brought to us. Tiffany sent me something. And also LB 519, the package that deals with trafficking. They're very important issues and ones that we should be supporting on your behalf and let the UNICAMER know. And I do know there's some opposition, unfortunately, from brother lawyers and brothers and sister lawyers, but that doesn't mean we won't go ahead and do this. So I really appreciate your coming down today and bringing this issue before us, because it's a very important one.
Thank you, and we really appreciate your support as well.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. You mentioned different types of restraining order forms. What kind of restraining order forms are there? What kind of different types?
So in Nebraska, there's three types of protection orders. There are domestic abuse order, sexual assault order, and a harassment order. And sometimes we see domestic abuse end up on harassment, but those are the three types. And then restraining orders are typically something that's put in place by the court as part of a divorce or custody sort of case, but they are not enforceable through arrest, but protection orders are.
Okay. And could the three forms be combined, so that there's one form and it covers everything so the person doesn't accidentally fill out the wrong form?
So that's been a discussion at the state level, and we would be happy to work on that. One of the things that LB 532 does is it actually allows for the court to identify if, that the order was filed on the wrong form and to grant it in a different form. So if they applied for harassment order, but it's really a domestic abuse relationship, they can grant it as a domestic abuse order.
Okay. And in filling out the forms, are people allowed the opportunity to add supporting documents, such as photographs and/or comments from friends, neighbors, relatives, et cetera?
They are allowed to attach documents to the back of the affidavit, and then those all are given to the court when they review that affidavit.
Thank you.
I think that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We move on to item six in public hearings. Letter A is addition of the premise license class, one, class I-1224934, Zilicious LLC doing business as Weston 1529 South 203rd Street, Suite 168130 in Omaha, Nebraska. We will open the public hearing on that item. Sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Jim Mumgarth, representing Zilicious LLC. Just here if there's any questions.
Okay, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone that'd like to comment on this matter? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. What's the will of the board? Motion by Commissioner Borges, and seconded by Commissioner Boyle, even though Morgan did it, but he was in line. With that, please vote. You did.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item seven is the Finance Committee. Item one is the Budget Report. Commissioner Morgan. Budget.
As presented.
Okay. As presented, we'll go on to item C, which is the Child New Services Report. Item one is the Resolution approving the sale of $6,45,000 in the Omaha Douglas Public Building Commission bonds, in all terms and conditions, incident is there, too. This item is on. Would anyone in the public like to comment on the item? Yes. Yes. There's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by, I mean, Commissioner Borges, and seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Comment, please. This is time for anybody to comment on the item, please do.
Right, okay, thank you. Luis Jimenez, 518 North 40th Street. Is the agreement that the county is not going to affect the historical nature of the MUD building, that's of concern to me still, because it's not like, I haven't seen the language, it hasn't, I don't know where it hasn't been sanctioned, that that, that's an agreement of like fifty-year preservation of the MUD building. I just want to highlight that as a point of concern for my part. Thank you.
For the point, the building is preserved unless there's a catastrophic disaster. So, yes. Paul, you want me to come?
Paul Cohen, Building Commission Administrator, yes, you covered that, Commissioner. Chair, you did state that correctly, but the agreement between the county and MUD at the moment preserves that building for fifty years barring natural disaster. Later on this month, if you approve today's resolution, and the city council does, we will purchase, the Building Commission will purchase the property from the county, and all of those points in the bill of sale between MUD and the county carry forth to the Building Commission, and that's in the agreement. So I ask for your, for your support for this resolution. As you noted, the bond is $6,45,000, $6,45,000. That will cover whatever additional costs we have in closing the sale between the county and the Building Commission. All other fees have been paid, interest rate 3.0499. On the twenty-year bond, we thought that was pretty good. We ask for your approval of this resolution.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, there's a motion, second. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Item G is the Human Resources, our items, number one is the Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service, as submitted. Item two is Legislative Issues, and item A is Discussion Action to Support Legislative Bill 163, Permit Counties to Conduct Elections by Mail. Commissioner Borges.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it's important, in the past, we have supported this, and again, it's back up for debate, and I think, well, actually, it's in committee, but I think that it's worth us taking a position on in support. We've talked for years about moving in that direction, just for historical purposes. They have increased the number for counties to be able to do elections by mail, from counties with seven thousand to counties with ten thousand. Here in Douglas County, we have, and at the discretion of the Election Commissioner, can do all mail-in on special elections, such as an off-election where there's a school bond, they could do all-mail elections. And so I just think, again, for us to be able to support this and keep it moving, I would move that we support LB 163.
There's a motions by Commissioner Borges, and seconded by Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Boyle.
Oddly enough, I've spoken for this many times, Mr. Borges, and I've talked, I'm a real advocate of it for a lot of reasons. One, it saves a lot of money, and the other thing, I mean, my wife and I used this for years, we voted at home, and she told me how to vote. No, I didn't mean that. No, but anyway, I, we enjoy that privilege. Oddly enough, there are some people, some neighborhood groups and even ethnic groups that do not like, they don't trust the mail, and I don't know what the bill actually says about that, but it might be sensible for us to have some discussion about the possibility of persons who could receive a ballot by mail, and then instead of putting it back in the mail, taking it to a site themselves, instead of using the mail to drop it off, because they, they don't feel that, I don't trust it. And I don't know what else to say about it, but there are some people who want to vote, you know, they really like going to polling places, but if we could set it up so they could vote at home and then deliver the envelope themselves to someplace other than a mailbox, I don't know if that's, if that would solve the problem or if that makes any sense, but I'm definitely in favor of this bill, for sure.
Well, you're right, and if you remember when we had the discussion in previous years, one of the neighborhood groups and ethnic populations or minority populations brought up the issue about that, but then also brought up the issue of not being able to afford to mail it back. And so thus became the Dropbox sites. So we still have those, and they can utilize those. So we still have those, and they can utilize those to fill out their ballot and then drop it off in those boxes. And so this wouldn't preclude that because they would still be able to take it to those and to the office itself, so.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes, and again, we've mentioned Oregon. I believe the entire state is vote-by-mail on all elections, and I have not heard of any problems with their procedure. Do we know of any other states that have gone? Five other ones? Okay. And is it mandatory or is it optional?
They're, these are ones that are all the state, the whole states are.
Very good. Thank you.
Motion second. Please vote.
Motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent, other Commissioners voting yes.
Item B is discussion regarding LB 532, in quotations, protection orders and LB 519, a package of trafficking bills. Commissioner Boyle.
A real good discussion of it already, particularly of the protection orders and the trafficking bills are pretty apparent as well. So I would ask that, that I make a motion that we support these bills and communicate that to our lobbyists. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Commissioner. Please.
Marcus Martin, Douglas County Legislature. So this is like, just, just, I guess, to put on the record, LB 532 was filed back in January. Last night, it did have an erase and replace amendment that was, that was filed, that it looks very similar to the bill. Tiffany is available, that she can, she can speak to those changes, but last night did have a, an erase and replace amendment to the bill.
Did have a what?
Erase and replace, meaning the amendment completely, it, it just put in place a different, a new 532, my guy.
Okay. Motion, second. Commissioner Kraft.
Tiffany, were there any concerns about the changes?
Yes.
Tiffany Yeagle with Women's Fund. We worked very closely with the committee and with actually the Bar Association on the amendment that replaces the introduced copy. The primary change, the initial bill as drafted require, essentially required a hearing for all three types of protection orders, if not granted ex parte, so if not granted immediately. The amendment and the primary compromise with the Bar Association who opposed the bill was to not create a mandatory hearing requirement for harassment protection orders. So sexual assault protection orders and domestic abuse protection orders under this amended version will have a hearing requirement within 14 days, if not granted ex parte. The harassment protection orders will continue to function under existing statute. We didn't touch that. We went back to original. That was the primary change.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay.
Thanks, Tiffany.
Again, there's motion, second. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item three is a resolution applauding the December 2018 reauthorization of the U.S. Congress of the Second Chance Act and affirming Douglas County's support for the asked continued reauthorization and further investment in core criminal justice reform. Commissioner Borges.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I won't read the whole resolution on this, but again, I think it was important for us to recognize the importance of this act. If you remember, in December of 2018, the First Step Act was signed into law, which actually was a reauthorization of the Second Chance Act that was passed back in 2008. And since that time, there's been about $100 million per year to state and local governments for program in service enhancement for individuals that are leaving our correction facilities in order to give them a second chance to become productive citizens. And so I think it was important for us to recognize that and still stay on top of this. We have benefited, actually, as a county, from dollars from this, and it has proven to be successful in reducing the recidivism rates. And so, again, that was the purpose of bringing this forward. So I make a motion to approve.
Second. There's a, there's a motion, second. Ready, Ms. Clerk? Motion by Commissioner Borges and seconded by Commissioner Dawkins. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Item four is a resolution creating the, a Douglas County Complete Count Committee in preparation for the 2020 census. Commissioner Borges.
You know, we are going to be entering into the 2020 United States Census, and there have been the formation of complete count committees that are being established. We did find out that the city is forming one, and so Douglas County would like to form one with the surrounding communities as our partners, and again, establish us kind of cooperatively using MAPPA as well to do ours. And so this resolution is the first step in us creating that and partnering with MAPPA for us to, to do that with the surrounding counties. And so with that, I would ask for a motion to approve.
There's a motion by Commissioner Borges and seconded by Commissioner Kraft. Please vote.
Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I think I was out of the chamber when the vote was taken on the domestic violence bill and the protection order bill. Commissioner Boyle informed me that that had come up, and I appreciate that. Thank you. I'd like to add my name to those, so that it'll be a unanimous board vote.
I don't think by the rules we can do that. Well, right now, you're in the, we're in the middle of the vote for four. Are you voting on four?
On the two bills that we were just discussing.
We're not, we're not, we're voting on four. Are you voting on four?
No, I'm not.
Okay. He's not voting.
All right, motion passes. Commissioner Kavanaugh present outvoting, everyone else voting yes.
Commissioner Boyle.
Just, everyone here voted yes, and Mr. Kavanaugh was not here. And I asked him, I would much rather have that, those bills go down with a seven to nothing, so there's not some misunderstanding that we're not unanimously in support. And so I would ask that, I guess we have to vote to suspend the rules first, and I apologize for that, but I think it's an important matter. And I would ask that, I make a motion to suspend the rules so we can consider his vote.
There's a motion to suspend the rules, which can't happen. Is there a second to suspend the rules? Oh, wait a minute, you got a motion right now. There's a motion to suspend the rules, which you, is there a second to suspend the rules?
Second.
Commissioner Kavanaugh is second. Suspending the rules requires two-thirds or over-majority vote, so it's five votes. So Commissioner, I mean, County Clerk.
Well, if, if I may, under Rule 5 voting, B1B, if a Commissioner may correct her vote by having a Commissioner on the prevailing side make a motion to reconsider if it's during the same meeting, so if that's, maybe, in fact, you're doing the same thing, but...
But you can, you can go this route, too, so. There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
No, no, I wanted to speak.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, I cannot support this. Commissioner Kavanaugh is constantly going out of the room to take care of whatever he is doing. I've never in my years of observation and participation seen anybody go out of the room five, six, seven times during some meetings, twice during others. It just gets to be obnoxious and annoying, and he needs to learn that he has a seat at the table when he is here. And I do not support it. The record shows six to zero, and that is unanimous when you look at six to zero.
Commissioner Boyle.
Well, I'd say it might send the impression that it's not unanimous. I know it doesn't say six to one, but because there's seven members, and I, and I understand what, what you're saying, and I, I would ask that you set that aside in the interest of the importance of these issues and allow Mr. Kavanaugh to cast his vote. It's a very, very important issue on violence and protecting women, and there's really not too many things that are more important.
Commissioner Duda.
If it's that important, we should stick around to vote.
Yes.
Okay, with that, Commissioner Boyle, I agree with the sentiments, and I'm going to vote yes just because you asked.
I vote yes.
Please vote.
Motion fails, three to four. Commissioners Boyle, Rogers, and Kavanaugh voting yes, other Commissioners voting no.
With that, we will go to, we do have a need for executive session. That's all I got, Dan? Unless you've got something else?
Other items.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying, unless you've got something else.
Yeah.
On legislation, I do.
Please.
I, I would like, it was brought to my attention, we've discussed LB 289 before. Speaking to Mr. Goodwilly this morning, he brought to my attention that this is coming out. It's kind of a, an omnibus bill in terms of a lot of the tax things they're trying to address. However, what is of particular concern to me is the part where the assessor's office is going to be required to do a three-year cycle of inspections instead of the six-year cycle that the current law allows. I, I find it amazingly ironic that this is an attempt to control tax laws, and it's going to cost us $2.3 million of more property taxes to try to accommodate this. Their perception of tax relief is very different than my perception of tax relief. This is from our fiscal note that says we would have to add $2.3 million worth of staff and equipment to meet the requirements of this bill. I would like us to go on record in opposition, not necessarily to all of LB 289, but to this part of LB 289, requiring the three-year inspection cycle by the assessor's office.
Okay. Are you clear with that? Clerk, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, opposing the portion of LB 289, that requires a three-year assessment cycle.
Exactly.
Motion by Commissioner Duda, just a second. Second by Commissioner Morgan, then Commissioner Morgan and Commissioner Borges.
Commissioner Duda, I really appreciate you bringing this up. The fact is, and it's amazing to me to even do it in six years, because with today's technology, counties all over the country, and I've discussed it with Commissioner Boyle in some of our finance meetings, and Joel Lorenz, I mean, they're all using technology and not even going out to inspect properties. And this is really important for Chris Burbach to hear. You take Maricopa County, which used to inspect properties. They've discontinued the practice. First of all, you're not going to go into many yards today, and that's the other problem. And you're walking around in a yard, and I think most people, if they see someone at 10:00 in the morning, whether they're dressed as nice as Commissioner Boyle is, they're still going to call the sheriff and wonder who's at the, you know, out in my backyard, if you can get in the backyard. And, you know, with satellite, this just doesn't make sense. And Commissioner Duda, if you decide when this hearing is, and I'm not sure if they've already had the hearing on it, I'm glad to go down and testify, and Marcos, you can let us know that because it doesn't make sense. I can give you the value of homes, and my people can especially, on residential property, sitting in their office better than you or someone else walking around the property. So, and it's done in minutes. And I would hope that our assessor might consider opposing it with us, and I don't know if you've had any discussions with Mr. Goodwilly or one of their people.
I don't know how that works. This is just for the board that I...
Thank you, and I'm sorry to take so long.
Commissioner Borges.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, just for, I brought this and we opposed it already.
Okay, we're already on the record?
Yes, so I just want to make sure you know that.
Okay, okay, fine.
So if you're, yeah.
I thought we were doing it so strongly that we'd do it again.
I just want, if there's something different, but there's not, nothing has been added.
No need for the motion.
We're already on record.
Chairman. Yeah, my only comment was that, yeah, we, we are already on record opposing 289. The information I have right now is that there will be a public hearing on 289 in the Revenue Committee on the 18th. So that's, that, I think, is what is prompting the, this discussion today.
The 18th of April.
Yeah.
Do you have a couple of comments, Commissioner Boyle, and then Commissioner Kraft?
Who introduced this, Senator Lenahan or who? Do you know? Who was that?
Yes.
Well, you know, we, we've talked to her, and she's always been friendly with us. I think we need to, I don't know what this bill says, so I'm running the risk. I'll ask Marcos if I'm way off the beam here, but what if we were to suggest that we were, the bill would say that they allow the commissioner, the assessor to use suitable means and technology or something like that? And maybe we could do something to support the assessor's office in being able to do this using technology? And maybe even she'd have to put something in her budget to do that, but I'd certainly be for that because this, I got a letter from a fellow who had a 21% increase, and his home is, you know, about 700 square feet, and he had a 21% increase. It's in the heart of South Omaha. You know, it just doesn't make any sense, this sort of stuff going on. So, but anyway, I would suggest we, we try to get this amended to allow the use of technology unless it's already in the bill.
Commissioner Kraft and Borges.
I was just thinking, my wife goes on Zillow quite a bit. That's all I need to say.
Commissioner Borges.
Commissioner Boyle, I think what might be a good idea, because Senator McCollister may be introducing a number of interim studies that have to do with Board of Equalization, that have to do with assessments, that have to do with that whole realm of things. And so it might be worth talking about that being moved to an interim study about the use, what you're saying, that we have an interim study on that particular issue, and we can certainly have that discussion with Senator Lenahan.
Okay, with that, the motion is withdrawn because we're already there. Come on, Louis, say your piece.
Luis Jimenez, 518 North Fortieth Street. I'm sorry, I was confused with the order.
What do you want to comment on?
Well, this came up.
You want to comment on this bill that's just been talked about?
Yeah, because there was a moment...
237?
Yeah, yeah, there was a moment...
Come on, briefly, please.
Okay. Your vote, you're about to take a vote.
No, we're not. We already did on this, no.
Okay, usually in legislative bodies, there's a sergeant-at-arms that goes around and makes sure that the people who have privilege of voting, vote, to avoid attacks like Mr. Kraft made against Mr. Kavanaugh. Thank you.
Thank you. There is a need for executive session. We reserve the right to enter into executive session in order to protect the public interest with respect to, yeah, I got to read this, though, in order to protect the public interest with respect to discussion on the, on the item of litigation. With that, there's a motion by Commissioner Boyle, seconded by Commissioner Duda. Ready? Oh, Kraft, sorry, I thought, I saw Claire's hand, so. With that, please vote. Please do.
I hope this is a thoroughly short exec session, but I know better than to make predictions. We do have an Administrative Services Committee scheduled for up in Room 903. We have some guests present this morning to join us for that, Shane Augen and Scott Wattenbaugh. We're going to take, I'm going to plan a 15-minute break from the time we come out of executive session until the committee meeting starts up in Room 903. Thank you.
And again, we're going into executive session for litigation. Please vote.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Commissioners, Commissioner Boyle, are you a yes?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Kavanaugh, you're a yes? All right. Commissioner Morgan is absent. All right. And you're a yes as well, Commissioner Morgan?